Okay, Mr. Nella, we're live if you'd like to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings, and welcome everyone to the second virtual Board of School Trustees meeting for the South Bend Community School Corporation. Hopefully, everyone's staying healthy and doing well, and we did have a closed session at 4:30, and then I will have Ms. Hernandez do our roll call, please.
Mr. John Anella.
Here.
Ms. Leslie Wesley.
Here.
Mr. Rudy Montarosa.
Here.
Dr. Ruth Warren.
Here.
Dr. Sturt Green.
Here.
Ms. Alitha Jones.
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Ball.
President.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Before we get started, just wanted to acknowledge our friend and colleague, Mr. Montarosa, who lost his father this past week. We really appreciate you being here during this tough time, and you and your family are in our hearts and prayers. So, thank you, Rudy, and hang in there.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an agenda to adopt. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Let's see, moved by Dr. Green and seconded by Ms. Wesley. Do we have any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 All's against? Okay, we have an agenda. Now, we have approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes from the special meeting of 2:10:20. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Montarosa. I think that was Dr. Green and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the minutes?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Hi, I have a short statement that I would like to read for point of clarity for discussion item three.
Sure.
In regard to the statement regarding recent Department of Justice visit, the Department of Justice visit to South Bend Community School Corporation in the month of February 2020. It is undeniable that the Department of Justice visit to the South Bend schools in February 2020 was cooperative and planned. The visits are part of an agreement from the 1980 court case that established the urgent need for the consent decree. It was a compliance monitoring visit, and whether or not it was an investigation is a matter of interpretation, and should not deflect from the urgency of the matter, or that it reflects from the fact that this particular meeting, three days, was necessary because the corporation missed two deadlines to provide a plan acceptable to the Department of Justice, so to adhere to the stipulations ordered by the court in 2018, which the corporation has not yet accomplished. Lastly, these factors, along with COVID-19, has not diminished the urgent necessity to ensure all students, particularly students who have historically been underserved, receive the same respect, care, and opportunities administered by the South Bend Community School Corporation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else, any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing no other discussion on the minutes, all those in favor of approving the minutes of special meeting of February 10:20, please say aye.
Aye.
All's against? Okay, we've approved the minutes of 2:10. Now, we're on to recognitions. Dr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Nella, and Mr. Montarosa, we're thrilled that you're here tonight. Thank you. Beginning recognitions, I would like to ask Mr. Rudy Montarosa if he would read the resolution for Adams High School Purple Star designation.
South Bend Community School, oh, right. Okay, I didn't want to make sure that I was off mute. South Bend Community School Board of Trustees Resolution in Support of Military Families, April 27, 2020. Whereas today, over 1 million Americans are bravely serving in the United States Armed Services, more than 19,000 Hoosiers have actively served their nation away from home. And whereas over 20,000 children in the state of Indiana are members of military families, and whereas students who have parents in the military may experience six to nine different schools during their K through 12 education. And whereas frequent moves, family separations through deployments, and reintegration issues present unique challenges to military families. And whereas the South Bend Community School Corporation is committed to meeting the unique needs of all students, especially those of military youth. And whereas the South Bend Community School Corporation offers our gratitude and support for all military personnel, their families, and veterans. And whereas the South Bend Community School Corporation will establish a trained point of contact at each building to support military families, and therefore be it resolved, the South Bend Community School Corporation will make every effort to connect military families with the resources they need. Attested to this day, April 27, 2020, signed Dr. C. Todd Cummings, Superintendent, and John Anella, School Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Montarosa. And now, I would like to ask Dr. Warren something that's close to, I know, this board's heart, to read the resolution commemorating National Library Week. Dr. Warren?
Thank you. National Library Week, April 19 to 25, 2020. Proclamation, whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop literary, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards. And whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups, and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture. And whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Bend School Board of Trustees and the South Bend Community School Corporation declare the week of April 19 to 25, 2020 as National Library Week. Attested to this day, April 27, 2020, Dr. C. Todd Cummings, Superintendent, John Anella, School Board President.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. We would also like to point out that April is Autism Awareness Month. It's also the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. Climate change is perhaps one of our biggest obstacles, and how we work together to be more sustainable will ensure a better place for all of us to live. We would also like to commemorate and celebrate April as Occupational Therapist Month. And then, we would also like to say that we are appreciative and grateful for all of our after-school professionals. This, we, April 20 through 24, this week actually, is After-School Professionals Week. Thank you to all those folks who work hard every single day, especially those at Riley and Washington, and those who work in our kaleidoscope programs and our before and after-school programs. Mr. Nella, that's the end of recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. The floor is still yours. Superintendent announcements.
So before we continue on through superintendent announcements, it has been a tragic week in the district. We wanted to take a moment to have a moment of silence. First, for Mr. Montarosa's family, the Williams and Cole family from Swanson, and finally, we were notified today, former board member Sheila Bergeron passed away this weekend. So, we'd like to take a moment to have a moment of silence for those folks. Thank you, everyone. Tomorrow, April 28, at 4:30 PM, there will be a PAC forum on the referendum on VoteSouthBendVoteYes.com's Facebook page. So, 4:30 PM at the SouthBendVoteYes.com Facebook page. Electronic Talks with Todd will be Tuesday, May 5, at 7:00 PM. That will be on the district's Facebook page. Battle of the Books will be an online virtual experience. We know it will be Wednesday, May 20, and the time will be determined. And then kindergarten enrollment, the link is on our website, and if you have a kindergartner that you would like to enroll, be asked that you go to the link on our website and enroll them. Would be thrilled to have them join us next year. And, Mr. Nella, that's the end of superintendent announcements.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cummings. And back to you again, Academic Focus Superintendent, COVID-19 update.
We wanted to give just a brief presentation of where we were since our last board meeting. And so, I always want to reiterate what it is we're doing in the district. So, number one, our theory of action, using health data to make all decisions, keeping students, staff, and families safe, providing basic needs for our most vulnerable students, food, laundry, the internet, continue academic pursuits through e-learning, and finally, to mitigate economic impact on families and staff, paying our workers, and giving the community, students, and teachers as much advance notice as possible. And with that in mind, we want to make a very early food and nutrition announcement. First, I want to say thank you to the City of South Bend, who donated 22 iPads to assist our food and nutrition workers to electronically log all of our data and map out the needs that we're having for families in real time. Because of the way that food programs work, we will begin transitioning from our school year food program to our summer food program beginning on May 20. We'll make announcements. We will add maps. We'll make sure that the community knows the changes that we're going to make. But because of the way that we're billed and that we're reimbursed by the Department of Education, on May 20, we'll need to begin making some changes to our food program. I also want to say thank you to the South Bend Educational Foundation. Since our last board meeting, they have raised additional dollars to cover nearly $13,000, $12,150, in pledges to pass out gift cards to students who are supporting their families. Students, if you have a job that you have been furloughed from or are no longer able to work, please contact your social worker or principal to be able to participate in the program. Not only that, but the foundation has made a financial commitment of providing at least 10 additional buses enabled with Wi-Fi. And I want to say thank you to the community who has given to get us to the nearly $13,000 mark. A couple of hot topics looking ahead. On Friday, the governor's announcement will lay out whether he will continue the stay-at-home order and how he will begin to open up the state. He will also lay out a plan for what school in the fall may look like. Employees, the board has agreed to pay you the rest of this year. You will be paid up until your regular final payday of June 2. May 20 is not the end of the school year. You'll be paid for your final regular payday. We're working on students and teachers, how you get your items from school. We'll be watching the governor's announcement on May 1. Graduation, we're still taking senior and principal input. We're still taking social media input. And two weeks ago, we launched the senior survey. Seniors continue to stay in touch with us. And again, we'll be watching the governor's announcement on May 1. Thinking about summer school, our first session has been converted to all virtual. Our second session, after July 4, will be waiting for the governor's announcement on Friday. Is currently scheduled to be both virtual and in-person, a blended approach. Credit recovery. Chad Addy and I met with principals, counselors last week to launch a plan to ensure every student is on track to graduate. This will be the first time we've been able to guarantee that. Now, I want to toss it to Mr. Rene Sanchez, but before I do, any questions on our third wave update from the board before we do a hiring update for Mr. Sanchez?
I want to say, can I say something? Dr. Cummings, can you go back over the graduation? Because I think that in the public has been some confusion about what the graduation requirements have been because of COVID-19, and when students will, when they need to complete all of their work. And I think that's, there's two questions. When do students need to complete all their work if they're a senior? And when will you know the final decision about graduation requirements for seniors?
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Wesley. So, a month ago, the Superintendent of Public Instruction announced that students will not be penalized, or they won't go backward in their e-learning work. So, what happened was people heard that we don't have to continue to elearn. Students, please continue to elearn. Our current last day is May 20. So, we need every student to continue to log in and elearn with their teachers. Our academic team is distributing final written guidance this Friday to counselors and to principals, working out all the details of grading and of transcript. It is true. The Superintendent of Public Instruction has said you cannot go back. So, we do want to take the anxiety off of students who are worried about their grades. But what the details look like, how we'll assign grades, and what transcripting looks like will be something that our academic team puts in writing this week. I'll add that to my next board meeting update. I also want to talk about the graduation rumors. Anything about graduation at this point is certainly a rumor. Like I said at the very beginning, we work lockstep with the governor's office and the state and the St. Joseph County Department of Health. No one wants a graduation more than the school board and myself. But we are working with them to determine how we can best honor the class of 2020. And so, we, like everyone, I'm sure in the state, will be listening to the governor's notice on Friday, and we'll be working with his office and the Department of Health to make our final announcement. Thank you, Ms. Wesley.
Thank you.
So, if there's no other questions, I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Rene Sanchez, who will give us a hiring update for the district. Mr. Sanchez.
Okay. Trying to share the screen. Okay, here we go. Good evening, board members. I just wanted to give you an update on what has been transpiring over the last few weeks as we move towards the end of the regular school year. And so, this past week, on Friday, we held our annual draft day for teachers that were in the displacement pool. 81 teachers were involved in the draft, and at that time, we had 150 total positions for 2020, 2021 available. At the end of the draft, we still had 23 teachers largely elementary who stayed in the displacement pool due to their certification. Here is a list of the positions that were available on draft day. You can see that they add up to 150. Since then, over the weekend, we posted 99 positions within our internal personnel postings website, so that that way, if teachers are interested in interviewing for those positions, they can go see those. There are also an additional 35 positions that have been posted for the empowerment zone. These posts don't just include teaching positions, they also include Title I positions, DIS positions, counselors, social workers, et cetera. So, beginning this week, these first couple of days, teachers will be available, or they'll be able to apply for these internal postings. Then, over the rest of the week, principals may interview for some of these positions, some of these positions like DIS, and some of the Title I positions, they have interviews required. So, those will have to take place. Principals have until May 1 in order to let us know who they would like to hire. Then, at that point, we'll reconfigure the job postings, and I'll get to that in a second. Also, beginning today, the empowerment zone is posting positions that are available for any of the South Bend corporation teachers to apply for, or people who are, teachers who are in other corporations can also apply for them. But they are not moving on the same timeline as the corporation is. Beginning next week, we know that when there are internal movements, there will be other openings that are created. So, the teachers that I mentioned earlier, the 23 teachers who were in the displacement pool will have the first chance at some of these new openings. For any teachers who are still remaining, there's a good chance that they will displace, transition to teaching, or other lower seniority teachers in those subject areas. There will be a second draft day that will take place at this time. If there are teachers remaining in the displacement pool, they will be offered a position for which they can obtain an emergency permit. Then, following that, any administrators who are returning to the classroom may choose positions, and then we will also offer contracts to our student teachers. They can interview for positions. And then, finally, we hope to be finished with the, as much of the hiring process as we can, or at least the internal hiring process by June 1, so we can open up positions to external applicants. At that time, or at that time when we close the internal process, external applicants can apply and interview with principals. As of right now, a quick review of the HRS software, we can see that 28 external teachers have applied. And then, in order to maintain some semblance of uniformity and order, we are concluding any internal lateral movements on June 8. And that's the human resources update. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Appreciate it. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Nella? So, I have a question on your slide about the teachers in the displaced pool taking the place of, yes, right there, thank you. Will displaced transition to teachers or, hold on a minute, or lower seniority teachers in their subject areas? So, I'm a little confused about how that will happen. In other words, will they just, will that just happen one by one? Could you just explain that a little bit more?
Yes, this is a process that we have worked with NEA and Jason Zook, who's over Certified Staffing. We've been solidifying this process because we knew that there was going to be a little bit of a, I guess, overage in staffing at this point. So, we wanted to make sure that we, rather than risk having all teachers who are transitioned to teaching in the district be removed, which, and that's something like, I think it's close to 60 teachers, we would be very targeted in the teachers who would have to be displaced as a result of these certified teachers who were in the displacement pool. And so, this process, I guess, to answer your question further, is to ensure that teachers who are certified are certified with experience are able to have positions within the corporation. And then, the transition to teaching teachers, they will have positions, because in the eyes of the state, they are certified teachers, but they are not of the same level of certification and experience as these licensed and experienced teachers.
Yes, that was my question, because I think that's a much more humane way to do it. I know in the past, it was just a broad cut. You know, everybody below three years or something was riffed, and then we could call them back. So, I'm really glad that you're doing it this way. It's less, doesn't cause as much anxiety for some of those people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Anyone else?
I have a question about the empowerment zone, teachers that have elected to come out of the zone. Do you have any information, Mr. Sanchez?
So, are these the teachers who selected to come out of the zone, or these the teachers who were asked to leave by the zone?
No, that elected to come out.
So, the teachers who elected to come out, they were part of the displacement pool? So, they went through the process on draft day?
So, the teachers that were not selected to stay in the zone, what were those numbers? Are those teachers in that same?
Yes, they would have been part, they would have been part of that 81 teachers.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you for the update. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it looks like that concludes Academic Focus. So, then, we are on to hearing of visitors on action agenda items. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on action agenda items? No?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. The nonverbal cue, but just to check, thank you. Appreciate it. So, then, we're on to the consent agenda, which is 9.01 through 9.06. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the consent agenda, which includes accepting any attached financial reports and statements, which there are none, approving any attached consolidated registers of claims and distributions of payroll for payment under item 9.02, approving personnel decisions listed on any attached reports under item 9.03, adopt any attached resolutions under item 9.04, which there are none, accepting any gifts to the corporation and approving any fundraisers, 9.05, which there are none, and then contracts under $50,000, which there are none to report as well. So, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Montarosa. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All's against? Okay, thank you. We've approved the consent agenda. We are on to action items. 10.01, it is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the course description guide. Do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Moved by Ms. Wesley and seconded by Dr. Green. Do we have it? Well, before that, I think we have Mr. E. joining us. Maybe he can give us a little background on the course description guide, and then folks can ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, President Anella, Superintendent Cummings. The course description book is basically a list of all the courses that have been approved by the board over the years. Anytime the board approves a course, we simply add it to the, to the book. The one the state retires a course, we take it out of the book. So, this is basically a pro forma for the board.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Nella?
Yes, Dr. Warren?
So, you know, because I came out of high school, I'm always really interested in the course description book, and I looked at it today. I am just astounded by the offerings in career and tech education, just astounded. And I wanted to point that out to the public. We have agriculture, environment, business, engineering, hospitality, health, trades, multiple courses in all those fields. And I just feel like we're giving so many opportunities to students who either want to go to college and have these courses, or don't want to go to college and go into another line of work. So, I just really want to lift those courses up, because I thought they were just remarkable.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Thank you for pointing that out, because there are so many things that South Bend schools offer, and thank you for mentioning that. One question I have, Mr. E., is on the book. Is there a physical book, or is it best way to find it online, or give us a little background on it?
In the past, it used to be printed, for example. In the past, it used to be printed, for example, three years ago, it was printed to the tune of $10,000 or even $11,000. Last year, we only printed 50 copies per high school that the counselors took with them to the classrooms when they did the scheduling for the following year. This year, it was mostly online, and I think the, these unprecedented times forced us into thinking outside of the box, so to speak.
So where would you, where would we find it on our website?
It should be on every high school's website.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Ms. Wesley?
Yes. Dr. Cummins, I'd like to say for equity purposes and to make sure that we reach the masses of parents, some parents still don't have, they may not be able to get located on our website or get access to the website. Is there some way we can get some copies that are available? Mr. E, that could be available to those parents if they wanted to get a paper copy also? And is that, also is that course description book available in Spanish?
It is not available in Spanish. I don't think it had ever been translated, but that's a, that's a good point that you bring. I think we need to do that. We are able to print it in the, at the print shop. I will make sure that they get it. We are limited, however, to 72 pages, and I don't know if that is state regulated or machinery regulated. Our machines cannot handle more than that, but I will find out and I will let Dr. Cummins what I found out.
So then after Cummins, what could happen is, is that it'd be good to get those books out to like some of the community centers such as La Casa de Amistad, on the Martin Luther King Center, the Charles Black Center, the Robinson Center, so that those books are available to parents. If they are there, it could be a copy that we would ask those centers possibly, and ask the centers just to keep those copies there at their agencies. But therefore, that way, that those families that we have and that we're in the contact with, they can be able to look at that hard copy. And then if they request one, then they'd be able to, to receive it.
Thank you. We can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. E.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Since the board voted for the pathway, has there been information given to the public on the different diplomas and how the pathway process works? Because with a lot of parents that I've spoken to, there is some confusion as to how this works. And I would like to request, I will vote to accept the guide today, but I would like in the very near future that we have a clear understanding and it's articulated so that the public can understand what the different diplomas are and how the pathway works for seniors.
So if I understand, I'm sorry, if I understand correctly, you would like a presentation on pathways in high school?
Yes.
I will make sure we get that scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and that would be very helpful for, for a lot of people's information.
Clarification, is that the graduation pathways or the different CTE pathways?
The grad, I think she's talking about the graduation pathways and a new, the new pathways for the class of 2023 and
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's the real desire there, but I don't think it hurts to be instructed or reminded as to all the other diplomas and how they work.
Yeah, I mean, CTE is a huge, huge piece too, so that's good to have mentioned as well.
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Green?
I want to ask Mr. E about the possibility of having electives on the books for ethnic and race studies. Courses around the country becoming more prominent, but the state, as far as I know, Mr. Monterosa and I looked into this last year, and apparently the state is requiring at least an elective at the high school level on race and ethnicity. And I wonder, you know, not, not for the guidebook so much as maybe a future consideration that there be electives offered in the high schools. And one possibility that the board has thought about, as Ms. Wesley raised it earlier in, in our executive meeting, that perhaps we partner with some of the local colleges that may already be offering these classes and that there'll be dual enrollment. Is that a reasonable thing to ask?
I do believe that there is an ethnic studies course that is offered at the high school level. It should be in the book.
Okay.
And there is also an Indiana studies that touches on current issues and
I think, Dr., I mean, Mr. E, we were looking at also some of the cultural studies such as geared towards our, I, our African-American students who talked about more of like the African-American history. I had explained that there is a, a college course, the history of rap music that they offer at Indiana University of Bloomington and also Indiana University at Purdue online. And so looking at where our students can be able to not only fulfill their requirements as far as history requirements, but also be able to earn a dual credit in the process. Also, Mr. Monterosa, can you, we had talked about also the famous person in the Latino community that also the history of?
Yes, there was Sessa Chavez, who just celebrated his passing on the 23rd of April. May rest in peace. Along with Doris Huerta, Sal Castro had passed away this month. People that were very important contributors to our American history and were certainly a part of what our country has become. But what Dr. Stuart Green had mentioned and what Leslie had mentioned, what everybody else on the board has mentioned is that we really wanted to stress that this, well, I think I speak on behalf of the board that we believe that ethnic studies is, is an important part of our curriculum. Given that we do come from a diverse student population, we live in a diverse country and that we should be aware of, of those diversities within our community. And so I think that's why we're stressing the, the, the desire to be able to have this, this, these classes available at all the high schools. I did see that it was there. I just, I guess my question would be to add along with what the others have been mentioning is whether or not we're going to offer those at all the high schools.
Once a course makes it into the book, it is available to any student at any high school.
Is that, is that all classes, Mr. E, or your, or that particular, the ethnic studies is?
All classes, including the ethnic studies, because well, for equity purposes, for example, you, you can't offer, let's say, criminal justice and at all for high schools, so it's offered at Riley. And students travel to Riley because they, they do have a right to take it.
Right. I think, I think that one of the things that we wanted to look at is just, you know, like being able to give them a course offering African-American studies. I mean, so as we kind of look, we want to just, if, if, if possible, because I, I don't know if a lot of classes are kind of offered at all buildings. I think they're kind of, some building, some classes like English and math, we know that are at the buildings and, and the history class such as government and then history one and two, but I don't know that if you can look at, and, and look into that for us, I mean, I guess we can look in the course book, but I just want to make sure that that is correct, that the ethnic studies class is offered at all for, for high schools, including RISEF. So if you can look into that for us and then get that information back to Dr. Cummins, that would be great.
I will.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just have one more thing. Dr. Cummins, I'm sorry, Dr. Cummins, can you make sure that when we add into that list of where we can put that course offering booklet? Is a possibility of being able to get the course booklet out to the live, to the library, libraries? And also to our Brown Learning Center where we know a lot of our families are going to, going to be going there for services. So I'd like to add that to the list also.
Of course. I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Wesley.
Thank you. Okay, so no further discussion. All those in favor of approving action item 10.01, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, we've approved a course description guide. Next, it's action item 10.02. It's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the job description and posting for Director of School Learning. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some will.
Second.
We've moved by Ms. Wesley and seconded by Ms. Ball. Dr. Cummings, why don't you give us a little background on this because this, there's, there's a lot of conversation around this, so why don't you give us a little background and folks can ask questions and comments?
And I was going to pitch that to Mr. Rene Sanchez, who has updated the job description. This job description is an update. We eliminated the job of the Instructional Leadership Director, and we replaced it with the updated School Leader Director. And so I know he's worked closely with principals and updating the job description. So, Mr. Sanchez, if I could ask you to give us an overview of the job description, please.
And Mr. Sanchez? See, as part of the job description, that we've included many of the requirements, many of the initiatives that we are implementing within the school corporation, whether it's restorative justice, responsive classroom, items like that. What makes this job description different in its update is that there are positions that have been assigned to it. So once you get past the, the, the main body, you'll see that items like athletics, title, title two, title four, like magnets, things like that have been added to the main responsibilities of this job position, so that that way that those jobs fall underneath the, the Chief Academic Officer and it has, those jobs have a place for, as a home.
Now, would this be one position or two positions? Because we currently
It's going to be three positions.
Three positions, okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just ask a little bit about the different responses you might have received in light of the change. And one, in, in particular, could you talk a little bit about what that, the former position brought to instructional leadership in the buildings and what we hope this new configuration will, how it will build on and extend that work?
So the original job description from last year around this time, there was actually an elementary one and a secondary one. Over the course of this year, they morphed into having a portfolio of schools. So the different, the, the main difference is that now there are, there are pieces of this job description that, that have, I guess, responsibility for more, more positions within or more responsibilities within the school corporation. And so much of the feedback came from the appreciation of oversight, the appreciation of planning, and making sure that the, the Director of School Learning can work closely with the principals to make sure that the, the plans of the board and the superintendent are realized.
Thank you.
Can, can you help highlight maybe some of the specifics? The, the job description is pretty comprehensive. And, you know, I'm thinking there are three now instead of two. But there is a lot of ground to cover if, in fact, we're starting to add some initiatives in addition to the academic piece, where we probably expect some coaching. And I gather we expect this person will be in classrooms and coaching not just principals, but teachers. What I'm thinking of as well is these new initiatives, we need PBIS teams. We're going to be trying to create consistency around cultural, social, emotional learning. This seems like a lot of things that we're expecting directors to do. And what are the things that we really want to highlight as we search for people to occupy those positions?
So the things like restorative justice and positive behavior interventions, deportments and multi-tiered system supports, things like that, those are items that we want to make sure that as we move from implementation on certain campuses, that schools can be identified where they're going to prosper. And then we can move in. And as we are coaching the principals and coaching administrators and coaching other leadership teams on that campus, that we're providing feedback using that, that type of language. So instead of just saying, well, you should do this, well, you should be doing this and this is why. And it ties into restorative justice. It ties into PBIS, so that that way you're using this common language between these three positions from the Chief Academic Officer, the Superintendent and the Board.
So can you just elaborate a little bit then on the relationship that these directors will have with others? There, since we're looking at a more integral, maybe a more integrative structure around socio-emotional learning, restorative justice, responsive classrooms, all the things that tie in within TSS, multi-tiered support systems. This person, these three folks are not only working, it sounds like, with the Chief Academic Officer, but others within the corporation itself. Is there an effort to perhaps create more coherence around these positions within the corporation? That is, there are times when it feels like it's a little fragmented. Are we trying to not only hire folks but to integrate them into the full range of corporate directors? Where there's a lot more communication around the issues that we're trying to deal with.
So what I really like about these positions is that these are the positions that where everything that we're trying to do for the district really come into play. So these are, are going to be our experts in working with the schools to ensure that we implement our code of conduct correctly. So that not only is it a code of conduct that's based purely upon discipline, but it's also based on socio-emotional and restorative practices and spending money the right way and getting the proper professional development to everybody. So these three positions are going to ensure that the principals and the campuses are highly aligned with the Chief Academic Officer, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Chief Equity Officer. And so these roles are going to be integral into this, into the success of not only just making things run, not making the railroads and the buses run on time, but also to make sure that we are actually moving the needle for instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
I have a question about the, the athletic piece. Can you elaborate a little bit more about the role that this individual player, the individual playing in the, the athletic component?
Yes, with athletics being near and dear to my heart and near and dear to the heart of many folks who work within the corporation, we need some place for athletics to reside on a regular basis. It is essential that the, we have coaches who work on our campuses, coaches who come from the community and work on our campuses. We also want to make sure that this is something that was recommended to us by the IHSA. So we wanted to, by having somebody, having an administrator where athletics resides, that is kind of a one-stop shop, they can handle the things that need to be handled, especially in the eyes of the IHSA.
And so this person will be over K-12 athletics?
That
And academics, okay.
Yes, they, so if you'll see in the job description, there are seven things listed. We identified as athletics as so big that that's the only extra duty that they will, that they will maintain. Whereas the other two will have three of those six duties.
So my other question is also with, in regards to that, I want to make sure that we're very clear. The NCAA Clearing House has been a challenge for a lot of our South Bend school students and, and, and so we need to define really where that NCAA Clearing House enrollment comes into play. Will this person be responsible for making sure that they're training the schools, the counselors, the principals, the athletic directors on making sure that those students are enrolled properly into the NCAA or NAIA, NAIA Clearing House? Because that can be, make, I mean, that can make or break a student being able to be eligible for a scholarship.
Absolutely. They will be responsible for that because they will make sure that the counselors are aware. We will also come up with a uniform date as to when. If people already know that they want to begin applying early on in high school, we can take, we can create a process for that with parents. create a process for that with parents. But it's also important for this to reside within the academics office, because as the NCAA gets more and more specific about what courses qualify for the NCAA Clearing House, this person needs to understand that if a student has that on their transcript, and it's unacceptable, that they will not be part of, they will not be able to qualify for the NCAA Clearing House.
Yes, and I want to also reiterate, Mr. Sanchez, that there is a form on a calculation on the NCAA, NCAA Clearing House website now, that gives you the formula and the calculation. I think that what's been a big dilemma is that it's been the fact that it's been a training issue on, in a issue where who's responsible in the schools for making sure that all of the students sign, are sign up and enrolled into the NCAA Clearing House? Also, who is responsible, and I want to be clear, of making sure that their mon-, that they're going to be able to monitor those point systems? Because you have to have four years of English, four years of math, two years of history, there's, there's a point system. And so, I just want to make sure that we're, as we hire these new positions, that we're very clear on that person, making sure that wherever they're going to house the responsibility. Because that's been kind of, kind of up in the air, is that the guidance counselors, the athletic directors in the schools, I mean, who is actually going to be the one training, and who is actually going to be the one that is going to make sure, along with the coaches, that we'll be able to monitor the, that NCAA and the NAIA Clearing Houses? Because that's where it's been, it's been a little rocky, and I want to make sure that, that we're clear on that, as we look at these positions, that it can, I mean, that's huge for a student to be able to get a scholarship to pay for a four-year, to get a four-year ride. And I would hate for students to miss out because they're not enrolled in the NCAA Clearing House properly, so.
Well, what's great about, what's great about this position too, is if this position allows or works closely with principals to ensure that all students are on grade level, to ensure that all students are graduating with the right, with the right classes, and with high enough grades, then the NCAA stuff will take care of itself. But it's, will also be good to have another set of eyes looking at it.
Now, I have one more question. Did I, was it, did I, I was writing down in my notes, did I hear you say that this, that there, this person would be responsible for the MTSS? Or did I, is that, was that correct?
They just have to be familiar with it. Because we're not, I, well, that's something that comes out of the Office of Equity, and they will, they will support the principals in the process of implementing it on their campus.
Okay, so they will be working directly with the, with the Chief Equity Officer before implementing something into the principals without, correct, that they'll be working directly with the Chief Equity Officer?
Yes.
You're correctly, okay, so that, they will be working directly with Mrs., with, with Dr. Sutton. They won't implement anything with the principals, they'll be working directly with her to implement it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
I have, I have a quick question. Piggybacking off of Ms. Leslie's question, will it, will this person offer any type of oversight for PBIS and the MTSS and restorative practices? Will they offer any type of oversight of the work being done in each building?
So, they will provide feedback to the principals if they are like, I think we're still in the process of expanding restorative justice, restorative practices, and PBIS to every campus in the, in the district. And so, if their campus is part of those, those pilots, those practices, then they for sure will be a part of that. But knowing that that's someplace that we want to go as an entire district, then yes, they will, they will eventually provide feedback for every, feedback and coaching and oversight for every one of the principals.
So, let, let me say something again. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I know that, that the Equity Department has, is holding the trans-, the Transformation Grant, that talks about PBIS, and mental health coaching, and they will be working with the teachers in the principal. I just want to make sure that we're not, there's no overlap, and that it's very clear now that we're in this infancy stage of hiring someone, that, that they will be working directly with the PBI, with the Chief Equity Officer to implement any type of PBIS, because we already have a system, and we're building a system in place right now. So, they'll be coming in, working directly with that Chief Equity Officer with PBIS and their mental health coaches, correct?
Yes, because they, these particular positions, they oversee the principals. The Equity Office doesn't oversee the principals, they may oversee the program or the initiative that is, that is taking place.
Right.
But the, the, these, these candidates will be the ones who are making sure that these programs are being implemented, because they are, you know, they have spawned out of the belief system and the goals of this board and our superintendent.
Okay.
So, their really, their primary role then is really as coaches, they're helping to coach implementation and fidelity to these various programs. And I think Ms. Wesley's question is probably more directed to the board's role and Dr. Cummings in terms of making sure that, in fact, we're doing PBIS with fidelity, that we're implementing restorative justice, cul-, cultural responsive classrooms, or responsive classrooms, I should say. Is that correct, that they're more coaches than they're providing accountability for actual implementation? Or do those things overlap?
They're going to, they're going to work with the principals to ensure that these programs that are being provided and overseen out of the Equity Office, make sure that they get accomplished. Because that, there will be expectations from the board, there will be expectations from the grant. And so, since these coaches, these, the Directors of School Learning will oversee the principals, they will be making sure that the professional development plans, the implementation plans, everything that has to get done in order to succeed with your vision and the grant can get accomplished.
Okay. Like, if, and if I might be able to add to Dr. Green's comment, these are primarily principal supervisors, so they're in a weird role where they're supervising and coaching, but they'll also become part of the feedback loop of how we manage not only the consent decree work, but the equity officer work. So, they'll be responsible for the implementation in the buildings, ensuring they're working with their principal, supervising them and coaching them, to make sure they have the support they need, be able to develop this feedback loop that, that we're doing what needs to be done from the Office of Equity, and making sure it's actually happening with fidelity in building.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. Go ahead, Dr. Warren.
I just want to say that I appreciate the, there's a little bit of a shift in focus in this, in that I think the previous position, there was a, more of an expectation about working with teachers directly. And in this one, I see more of an emphasis on working with principals, supervising principals, you're requiring principal experience. And I think that's really important, because principals need to know that the person who supervises them has walked in their shoes. And so, I, I really commend you for doing that. At the same time, I want to say, just be careful, since you're mixing the levels, that, you know, if you take an elementary, primarily elementary person, and have them supervise high school people, it doesn't work out so well. So, just be careful about who goes where, and who gets these portfolios of schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, Dr. Warren. Mr. Sanchez, I have a quick question. So, these are three positions. Of course, you have to ask, we're very proud of our low administrative expenses as a district, third lowest in the state. How are we going to pay for this, or how's this look from a cost standpoint?
So, we've been able to hold back on some other positions in the, in the corporation. So, we're, right now, we have two, two Instructional Leader Directors, and we can, I can get you the cost analysis for the other position, so that that way, we are able to make it cost neutral.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nell, I, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So, to add on to what Mr. Sanchez had to say, there's currently two ILD positions, and a principal on special assignment. So, basically, this is not a new position, these are re-titled job descriptions.
Thank you.
So, the folks who are in those jobs, those jobs have been eliminated, replaced with the School Leadership Director.
Got it. Anyone else? Okay, so you know further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. All those in favor of approving ten point zero two, please say aye.
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 All's against? Okay, ten point zero two has been approved. Thank you. Now, we're on to items from closed session. We did have a closed session, and we don't actually have an item to vote on out of closed session, but we had a conversation regarding additional compensation for our frontline workers. All the folks who are feeding our children, providing Wi-Fi, and doing all that work right now at this dangerous time as well. So, we have instructed the superintendent to negotiate with our work groups representing frontline workers. Number one, our priority is their safety, but also, we want to make sure that they're fairly compensated as well. So, I, we, we know you have to do some negotiations with the unions, so we will instruct you to begin negotiations with them.
Thank you, Mr. Nell, and we will get right on that. And hopefully, we'll have a preliminary report at our next board meeting.
Yes, thank you, thank you. We know how important our employees are, we want them to be safe, and we also want them to be well compensated. So, thank you very much. Because they, and thank you to all the employees for all the work you're doing right now, because it, it has been amazing. So, we really appreciate that. Okay, that's all from closed session. So, then we're on to hearing of visitors on other items. So, I believe that would be, Mr. Monterosa, do you have that, or who has that this evening? You're on mute still.
I apologize. There was one, one comment slash question that was submitted to Board Comments at sb.school. This comes from Erica Finke. Here are the questions I have for the meeting. How many students are actually participating in their e-learning studies? And how will COVID-19 affect summer school? Will it be online? Thank you, Erica Finke.
Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. Dr. Cummings, do you want to weigh in on that? And you're on mute too.
So, what, what we do in our cabinet meetings, if I have to say you're on mute, you put a dollar in the foundation, but I don't. Mr. Monterosa, if you'll forward that to me, on, Dr. Dvetsky will work with her on answering the attendance question. And like I said in my presentation, the first session of summer school is going to be online. And after the governor's announcement on Friday, May 1st, we will make our decision about what the second half of summer school is going to look like. But we also do have a plan to make sure that all of our high school students are on track to graduate using Plato. So, if you'll forward her comment to me, or Ms. Gabby, we'll make sure that we, we get her the specific information that she needs.
Dr. Cummings, could you, do you have the date chip for the first summer session?
I would have to get those for you, unless someone texts them to me. I don't have them in front of me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Monterosa, was that it?
That was it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so that's all for hearing of visitors. Now, we are on to board communications. The board has the opportunity to speak at this time. Does anyone wish to speak? Ms. Wesley, raised your hand.
Yes, you know, as always, I'd like to just say to our listening audience, and those that are watching through YouTube live, I'd just like to say always to all of our students and our staff, the sacrifice that you are, are doing right now to, with e-learning, we appreciate you, appreciate all the, everyone, the bus drivers, the food workers, everyone that is a staff member at South Bend Schools, I really truly do appreciate you all. And it really warms my heart when I'm able to talk with individuals in the public that are just really saying amazing things about how you all are doing. And also, Dr. Cummings, I'd just like to say to you, and also to your cabinet staff, administrative staff downtown at our, at our corporate office, thank you so much. Your leadership has been phenomenal. You've done an outstanding job, you've put it us on the map. We've been all at national, and it's always a good feeling when I can give my friends that call me from all over around the United States and say, "Hey, I seen South Bend Schools on, on TV." And I'd just like to have a huge shout-out, shout-out to my Washington family that was featured with the Wi-Fi buses. That was, that just really warmed my heart. And, and to that mom that's sacrificing to take her students to the parking lot where the buses are located, so that they can have Wi-Fi services. So, and that's to all the parents that are listening, all of your sacrificing. So, we'll get through this together. This is, you know, it's history, is, we didn't plan this, but you know what? I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Dr. Warren?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Monterosa.
Okay. I ask that the board and this community indulge me for a brief moment to share brief words in honor of my father, Roldolfo Senior Montero. I thank the board and this community for your condolences, and I recognize that my family is not the only one suffering through some tragedy in light of this global pandemic. As I mentioned at our last board meeting, this corporation stands ready to support you, and even board members, as we continue to overcome COVID-19. I just wanted to share that Roldolfo Senior was a Salvadoran immigrant who became a US citizen in 1976. He was a proud worker, a proud union man. And he was proud to have seen both of his sons graduate from public high schools and go on to college. He valued education, hard work, and he believed in public schools. I renew my commitment to continue what I can to support our students and look out for their best interests, as my father did for ours. To that end, I'd like to thank Melinda Huff, who invited me to read a story about Pete the Cat to her first, second, and third graders at Marquette-Montessori Academy. I look forward to virtually visiting McKinley Elementary, Jackson Middle, and our high schools. Again, our teachers are doing an incredible job as we continue to meet the challenges of this stay-at-home order. And I thank those teachers, staff, administration, and our students who are making it happen, and I look forward to continue to engage with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. Uh, Dr. Warren?
Yes, I just wanted to give some information. Last meeting, I talked about the process for absentee ballot voting. And the absentee ballot requests have been very heavy, so I'm really happy about that. However, we've received reports from several voters in different precincts that they are not getting the correct ballot. In other words, they don't have the referendum questions on their ballot. If you live in the South Bend School Corporation District boundaries, if you have voted for a school board member, you should get a ballot with referendum questions on it. Now, in order to remedy this, there is an extra step. So, right now, to get an absentee ballot, you have to apply, send it in, they send you a ballot, they send it back, you send it back. Now, if you get an incorrect ballot, you have to call and say that you have an incorrect ballot, send the incorrect ballot back, and then get the correct ballot. So, there's an extra step involved. So, I'm asking for some guidance from the board, because this election is so critical for our future. How we will ask the election board or the clerk's office to tell us the extent of the problem, in other words, how many precincts were involved? How many voters have received an incorrect ballot? It shouldn't be a burden on the voter to try to get the correct ballot. And secondly, that, how can we guarantee that the second ballot they get will be correct? In other words, if the, if the mechanism is to send a ballot to a voter in a precinct and you print it off, then how do we know that the second time they print it off, it still won't be incorrect? We need to have some accountability here, and I don't know quite how to go about that. But this election is too important for us to ignore these kinds of mistakes in the election process. Thank you.
Ruth, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Um, do we know for sure? Now, it, it used to be, well, we know that our mail goes to Fort Wayne, then it comes back to South Bend. As far as ballots are concerned, when a ballot is mailed back, or mailed to a voter, does it go to Fort Wayne, or is it mailed within the South Bend boundary? Because they were supposed to change that- Boundary, because they were supposed to change that at one time and make sure that it's mailed within South Bend as far as ballots. So I was just curious as to, do we know for sure that they're not going to Fort Wayne first before they come?
You know, that I don't know the answer to that and I didn't even realize that that was a possibility, I do know that they're turning them around pretty quickly. So when you send in your application, the absentee ballot comes back pretty quickly and. I was told that if, that if the voter doesn't receive their absentee ballot within two weeks, they should call again and ask for it.
Well, they they've been really responsive, we we mailed in ours and we got back the ballots within a week. But yeah, I don't know, we, that's a good question, Ms. Jones. Dr. Warren, the the circuit court, maybe, maybe I should try to show folks the. Here, let me bring up this page, well. I have the page that I thought maybe I could share. With folks so they could see. What it looks like from St. Joe County. Bear with me one sec.
You mean what the ballot looks like?
Well, so they can see the webpage, here it is. Can you see that?
Yes.
So if they go to, let me expand it. They go to what, sjcindiana.com, St. Joseph County has the 2020 election information there. And and in the middle where my or my arrow is absentee ballot request form. And then it kind of gives you the instructions and then you'll see the phone number there, so if you're in a jam. There's that number 235-9838 and looks like there's another. Also, you can request an absentee ballot by calling 235-1812, so that's a good resource for people if you don't think your ballot's correct. You know, don't hesitate, please call them.
Yes, I think you can call either of those numbers.
I'll stop sharing my screen. Thank you, Dr. Warren, for all your work on this, I appreciate. Now I'm stuck.
There you go.
There we go, okay, sorry, anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Warren. And Ms. Jones, anyone else, any comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you, everyone, appreciate it, while we may have to do this again, so we're getting used to it. Thank you, everyone, for all your work and Dr. Cummings and your team downtown and all the workers in the school corp. Across across our district who are working hard and especially the ones on the front lines and all our teachers too. Who were thrown a. Thrown a curveball that no one's ever ever saw coming, so thank you very much. At this time, we'll adjourn, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Wesley and sec, I didn't catch you second it, but. All those, Ms. Jones, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Okay, this virtual meeting of the school corporations adjourned, thank you very much and everyone stay safe and healthy, take care.
Aye, thank you.